Okay, being 6:30, I will call the Ashland Planning Board meeting to order on September 2, 2020. We are meeting electronically due to the current COVID-19 pandemic. The governor issued an emergency order number 12 that waives the location requirement of public officials at a public meeting. We encourage members of the public to join our meeting via our Zoom connection, which is on the calendar entry on the town website. Other telephone conference information is also there. The meeting is being recorded and it will be posted within the next few days on the Ashland PBTV YouTube listing for the public to view. First of all, roll call. Kathleen DeWolf.
Present.
Paula Hancock.
Present.
And note that she is present by phone. Martine Badger, I am here. And Susan McLeod is our land use assistant. She is also joining us tonight. I'm going to skip the meeting, the minutes, we'll do those later. We're going to go right into our guest tonight. This is for an informal conceptual consultation for tax map lot number 004-002-002 at the end of West Street relative to a gravel pit quarry. Daniel Lucetti of HEB Engineers is with us representing Brandon Hilt's Construction. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you.
Glad you could make it.
Appreciate it.
One other thing I do want to just read briefly, and this is more for information for the public who might be watching this. This is what's called a conceptual consultation. And it is a time in which a, the planning board and a potential maybe future applicant can informally discuss a, in very general terms, a type of subdivision or site plan that might be forthcoming. The planning board may discuss any pertinent information contained in the master plan and the local regulations that must be considered. During the discussion, the board should describe their procedures to be followed for the filing, submission, acceptance, and review of a completed site plan review application should it come in. And at the time, the owner or the agent also at this time is, is able to outline in general terms what their proposal might be. The, as I said, this is just a conceptual consultation. It's not necessarily going to go into details. We're going to talk some about process, general regulations, ordinances, issues that may come into play. And so that is the purpose for tonight. So first of all, Dan, why don't you start right off? And give us some background.
Yep, so I'm Daniel Lucetti with HEB Engineers, North Conway, representing Brandon Hilt's for the potential development of a gravel pit quarry excavation for commercial use on tax map 004, walk 002, lot 002 at the northern end of West Street. The parcel is approximately 85 acres in size, running parallel with Route 93, the northbound lane. From what I could see in the zoning maps, it is in the rural residential zoning district. The southern portion of the property has a small sliver of the municipal wellhead protection area, and there's also a small sliver of an aquifer that is present on the northern part of the property. Basically, as you can see on the screen now, the excavation we proposed in the central to northern part of the property, the conceptual final build out would be about 11 and a half acres, or about 500,000 square feet. And there would also be the need to construct an access road along the western property line that parallels Route 93 to get to it. There is an existing gravel road that you can somewhat see in the plan that travels from east to west, or excuse me, west to east. That would be utilized for the first part of the road, then a new road would have to be built to more directly access the gravel pit. From my understanding, and I was unable to find any historic information on it, this property was used as part of the Route 93 construction for gravel pit and material storage area. And it does seem to lend that case in the contours that you can see on the bottom left-hand side of the screen, the way that they're shaped and kind of depressed really gives a sign to it was used as an excavation for whether it's a banked material or borrowed material to build Route 93. Couldn't find any documentation on that, but that's the word that I've been getting. So that's our proposed project. I had questions on the permitting, the local permitting process in Ashland, starting with, I know this is the planning board, but a zoning concern would be a variance would most likely be required for this use since it could be a commercial excavation gravel pit quarry within the rural residential zoning district. So I know that's not this board's expertise, but assuming that was granted by the zoning board, the need for site plan would be our next concern. I did receive, Susanna sent me the excavation regulations and application procedures from 1981, and I just wanted to confirm that those were still current and being used in the town because on the planning board's regulations, I didn't really see any information in regards to excavations, gravel pit, commercial uses. So that's kind of where I might leave off, and if you guys could provide some feedback on that, it might be easier than me going on to ask all the questions that you'll probably answer, or whatever way you guys want to go about it, I'm fine either way.
Okay, a couple things. The property, the, the lot is in the rural residential zone. There may be a very tiny piece at the, at the end of West Street that may overlap commercial, but the, but the entire, the rest, the entire rest of the property is rural residential. If you look at our zoning ordinance, when you look at the definition of rural residential, it does not list this as a permitted use. So yes, you were right in mentioning that it would involve the zoning board in addition to the planning board, and I believe it would involve a special exception rather than a And then after that would be approved, then it would come to the planning board. You also mentioned, you did mention, yes, that there is a groundwater protection overlay in one portion of this lot, and also the aquifer also overlaps. So our zoning ordinance does have an entire chapter on the groundwater protection overlay, believe it is chapter 9, 9B9 or 9C. Anyway, it is in the zoning ordinance that deals predominantly with storage of hazardous materials to prevent anything of that type from seeping into the groundwater area, into seeping the ground. So obviously, review that carefully to see if that does apply to any of, any of your And the aquifer, as you said, is towards the upper end of this excavation area. There are, okay. Relative to the excavation, our excavation ordinance, our current ordinance was done in And it was at that time based on RSA 155E. But of course, RSA 155E has been amended multiple times since our ordinance of 1981. So until, we are currently, coincidentally, and we started this before we got your inquiry, we have started on redoing that entire ordinance. I would suggest probably in the meantime, be very careful both looking at our current 1981 ordinance and the requirements of RSA 155E. And between those two, whichever detail is more strict is what would, would be in, in effect. If somewhere along the line, we finish our revision of that, we will work closely with our local regional planning commission to judge what details come into play at one, at one point. It will be a little tricky, but we can handle it. Kathleen, do you have any questions to begin with?
Speaking of regional planning commission, I'm, my thought would be because of where this is situated in, because one of the abutters is the state of New Hampshire, that this might fall under the statute RSA 36:54 and RSA 36:58, it would be a development of regional impact, and that would have to, you would have to go through that process, and a regional planning commission would have to review what, what might be proposed. Things have changed since the highway went in in 1963, or whenever it was, sometime in the 60s, and it's, we have more environmental concerns in place now. It's extremely steep slope, very steep. You know, there's a potential of destabilization once a shovel goes into the ground. By shovel, I mean, you know, heavy equipment. And, you know, there could be dust. I was concerned about pit slash quarry. Quarry indicates removal of stones, would there be blasting? And the other thing, because I'm the BO West representative for the planning board, the impact that would happen to West Street with the use of heavy equipment. I do have one question. Could you tell me how much ground did you have on West Street?
I...
I can't tell from reading the map, and I even use the magnifying glass, but...
On West Street, paved frontage, the plan that I'm looking at shows 162 feet that fronts on West Street, but I do not believe that a, that full 162 feet is within the paved limits of West Street.
Right, right, yeah. I was surprised it's that much.
Yeah. It looks miniscule.
Yeah, the line closest to it, the property line closest to West Street is labeled at 162 feet.
Okay.
I'd say probably 50 of that looks like it's within the paved limits.
Kathleen, I'm glad you mentioned the regional impact because this probably, we would, at the beginning of this process, one of the first questions we would have to consider when the app, when an application comes in is whether or not this project does have a regional impact. And the RSA actually has six factors or criteria that is used to judge that. So that would be a very first decision that we would have to make. And then part of that process then is if that is determined to be a regional impact, then the Lakes Region Planning Commission, which is our local planning commission, is part of that process also. And it's a prescribed process there. Are you familiar with some, Dan, are you familiar with some of these terms and, and requirements and so on?
Yes.
Okay, you've dealt with them before.
We've, yeah, and Conley, we've done several large commercial developments that require regional review.
Okay, okay, yeah. Okay, so that, yes, that would, Kathleen, I'm glad you mentioned that.
That's what I have, those are the questions I have. So Paula and Susan have anything?
Paula.
I will put myself on cue.
Paula, do you have any comments, questions?
I'm just, I'm just interested in abutters in that, in that area, if there is any land in conservation or that sort of thing, and if that would, if that would impact this present project.
I can't speak to our subject property and what status are, whereas, as you know, we're in the very preliminary conceptual stages. We've got very little research, but that would be included as part of our survey, full design, everything confirming what the status of the land is, if it's in conservation. And obviously, if it's in conservation, we won't be going much further.
But in, in general, in, in general, environmental impact would be important because of the numerous proximity of the wellhead protection area and the aquifer. Those, so environmental impact all would come into, into consideration.
That would probably cover my, my questions.
Yes, yes. Susan, do you have comments? You mentioned earlier when we were talking something about the master plan.
There you go.
Okay. Okay, she's going to switch computers.
The master, the master plan, chapter four is the natural resources chapter, and there is some concern expressed within that chapter about excavation and, and its impact. One of your abutters, which is now labeled daily, is actually Witten Woods, which is owned by New, New England Forestry and, and managed by SLA. So that is definitely a conservation area.
Okay.
You'd have to be dealing with, and actually above you, Gleden, Gleden Forest is also conservation land.
Okay.
So you're kind of surrounded by conservation.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess Kathleen already expressed certainly as, as a representative of the select board, the impact of the kind of traffic this would put onto West Street, which already is congested with, between the Ashland Lumber, Burger King, Comfort Inn, and the gas station there. It can be quite, quite the corner. I imagine if LRFC had anything to do with it, they'd immediately do some sort of traffic count as to how that, that road would be used. So that's certainly a consideration.
And in addition to the businesses along there, there are, there are some residential properties, including Common Man Commons, which is a retirement complex. So there, so that, and that is just, you see, just the other side of the storage area. You do have, I think you have it labeled on your map.
Yeah, so I guess we, we have, we were all curious about how you define a quarry as to, yes, if there's rock, whether there's blasting, crushing, screening, all of those types of activities tend to make a lot of noise and dust. So that would be certainly a concern for those who live nearby. So that would be something that would certainly come up in conversations.
So on the knowledge that I have is that it would be, the excavation process itself would probably be at the beginning a mix of machined excavation, potentially blasting, depending on where that bedrock does lie. Obviously, like you said, still early in the game.
Right.
But it would be included that, and I also believe that the processing material would be another desired use here. So crushing, screening, stockpiling for commercial use and sale would be...
Okay.
...here. It would also, I guess, shifting gears, if I could, towards the environmental side, if it's, it's appropriate now.
Sure.
This would also require DES AOT permit.
Yes.
And shifting towards my concern with the aquifer, I guess, in the 1981 regulations, it had the prohibited projects listed. Any excavation that would substantially damage a known aquifer designated by USGS. If DES, those are concerns of DES as well, obviously, would an alteration of terrain permit from DES satisfy these environmental concerns outlined in 1981 regulations?
I believe, I believe it would. I believe in RSA 155E, there are a few references, I believe, to alteration of terrain permit.
Okay, great.
I believe. And then I know it's in some of the drafts that we're working with also.
Yes.
So I would, of course, I can't put my fingers on it right, right now in the RSA, but, but I think there is some, some consideration of that.
They're tied together.
Yes, yes.
That's what I assumed, but just wanted to double check.
Yeah.
So Martine, if he has to get a permit from DES, he'll probably have to have a heritage survey and also an, you know, an endangered species flora and fauna. So they done also.
All part of that process?
Yep. The whole nine yards with the HPP checks and now wildlife biologist confirmation, that would be included once we get to the actual design and permitting.
Right, right.
Obviously, it's a substantial undertaking.
Yes.
Are you aware of any wetlands?
No, but those would be also required by DES certified wetland scientist must, Tampa Plan, either stating that there are no wetlands or delineate permit.
Where they are.
Permit if impacted, any wetlands on the property. So that would fall into the AOT.
Yes, okay, go ahead.
Okay, yeah.
And then another question that I did have about the restoration side of it, uncompletion, if ledge is encountered and ledge is blasted and a vertical face is created in that process, the, I don't remember exactly what the language said, but restoring it back to its natural slope, would that be then filling in all of the material that was previously excavated?
I'm not sure I can answer that right now.
The way you just said it, it sounds like, yes, how that would be done would be quite interesting.
Right.
Yeah, as, this is really our first experience with this whole process, with this type of application. So we are learning a little bit. So I've just made a note of that, that would be a question.
Those were my real questions. You all provided great input on the other sides.
Okay.
So I guess it's still, knowing that if the regional planning is still required, the excavation permit would still be the, aside from remove zoning from the picture to the planning board, the excavation permit would be the only permit required as site plan review would not be required?
I, I think, yeah, I, I think two things. It would require a special exception from zoning board. And, and I believe it would also require site plan with the planning board because within the RSA, there are several criteria within the RSA that the planning board can adjust or adapt or either, or make some, some specific changes relative to the particular project. So I do believe it would, after receiving zoning board approval, it would have to come back to, it would have to come to the planning board.
Would that be the excavation application as well as a planning board application? Or could it solely be the site plan application?
I just asked her.
Yeah.
Well, I, I guess we have, we have to review what our application looks like for the excavation because obviously there's going to be an access road of fairly substantial length, and that is more addressed specifically in our subdivision regulations and our driveway regulations as to what road requirements and standards are to that. So somewhere, somewhere in the next, that, that has to at least be addressed to who owns.
Okay.
But it is the planning board that determines the requirements for the excavation, the requirements for the reclamation. It's the planning board that determines the bonding requirements. So it does have to, so I would think it would be two applications, zoning board application and planning board application. If planning board application started first, it would obviously be, we would have to wait for the zoning board approval.
Correct.
There are ways to work the process.
Yes.
But I believe it would involve both boards and both applications.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good.
As a point of interest, on the west side of the Pembroke River in Bridgewater, there is a couple of sand pits over there, and one of them wanted to expand, and they had to go in front of the regional planning commission because they were within a quarter mile of the Pembroke River. I think you're outside of a, of a quarter of a mile, I'm guessing. Maybe not. And this was a much, this, I think this was only an increase of, I want to say it was five to 10 acres. It seemed like small potatoes compared to what you're representing, but they had to go through, they had to go through this process.
Yes.
So it had to come, it had to come to the, the Pembroke River Local Advisory Committee for input via budding towns. So, you know, it's, that adds to the time and the paper.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then I guess a question that I believe I know the answer to would be if improvements would be required to West Street, that would be determined upon application of the site plan review?
Yes, that would be part of the site plan review with the planning board. And obviously, and involved in some of that discussion would be our director of public works.
Yeah.
That type of thing.
It could, it could even be the fire chief because of the equipment there, there could be, you know, it could be, you might need fire equipment out there for some reason, or even if there was some sort of industrial incident that you would need assistance for. And it could even be the police, yeah, chief of police probably would have input too because I believe it was last year, there was an incident on West Street where a pedestrian that was, I believe, saying at the motel was struck by a car up there because there's no sidewalks up there. So you, potentially, there is pedestrian trap, you know, pedestrians walking at the side of the road. And as Martine said, the, the beginning of the road is very congested. There's multiple traffic coming in and turning, and there's vehicles, one of the businesses, the, the workers park in the, the right of way on the side of the street. So, yeah, there's, there's safety, there's safety concerns too.
Understood.
And there, there are also safety concerns concerning Comfort Inn because the parking lot to Comfort Inn is across the street from the establishment.
You are correct, Paul, yes. You are correct, Paul, yes, yes.
So I'm just saying it's, it's an additional safety concern.
Yeah, yeah.
You're full.
Yeah. West Street is, is definitely a place that we'd want to spend a little time actually there and watching some of the traffic type of things. Yeah. I will, we will send you in an email just a few links to a variety of things just to make sure that you know where they are, obviously our zoning ordinance, the ZBA and the planning board applications. I think you did get a copy of our existing ordinance, I believe, in 1981, but we can send.
I have, yes, I have the PDF copy of the 1981 excavation regulations.
And I'll send a link to the RSA 155E. I'll just, we'll just put all of that together right in one email. So everything is, is together there. And the, let's see. I think one else, one other thing in this. There is a small copy of this in the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
This is a little bit bigger, but it does show, here's your lot here. And here's the wellhead protection area overlapped with the red outline. And the aquifer bumps up into, right up in the top there. Yeah. So that gives a sense of that. Let's see, what else? I think that may be it. I think that's all the questions I have. Just, again, just a process. We've mentioned zoning board and planning board. And I mentioned the regional impact would involve the Lakes Region Planning Commission. And as I said, that is a determination that's made right at the beginning of the process. One thing I also want to mention though, obviously, this is going to, for both sides, for your, your side and for our side, this is, could be a very, a very complex, detailed application process and a great deal of information. There is a design review, next step option that you could do before you even formally submit a final application. Design review is also allowed by RSAs. And that is more detailed than what we've talked about here. But it is a process that would be noticed, advertised to a butters and to the community. But it would give, but that is, that can be done preliminary to finally filing the final application. So just an option to consider.
Thank you.
I don't know if you've, whether you've been through that process with anything. But I can send a little information on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, Susan, Kathleen, Paula?
No, no.
Just one last reminder with the, with the difference between the planning board and zoning board. Any other discussions, questions you have direct to the planning board at this point? Because the planning board is allowed to have these types of informal discussions at a meeting. The zoning board, when you get to the zoning board process, you cannot do that with the zoning board. They act only on formal applications.
Right.
So just, and that's also partly, I'm saying that also partly for the public that may be listening to this. So any other informal discussions, meetings you need in this process, just let us know and we can schedule, schedule you at any future meeting too.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And Susan McLeod, who has been with us, she is our land use assistant. So she also monitors all the email. So sometimes you may get something from me or something from Susan. But she's the one that will handle primarily correspondence if you've got any information on process and so on.
Thank you. Great. So in, in summary, I guess, my proposed approach to this now would obviously be reviewing with our client. If he decides to proceed with it, we would, our, my recommendation to him would be apply to the zoning board exclusively. Have zoning or get that squared away or not squared away depending, it goes, if it goes as planned, then proceed to, with the site plan application for review, whether it be the design review or complete formal application, is that correct?
Right, right.
Perfect.
Be good, yes.
Great.
Okay.
All right.
We look forward to hearing from you as things progress. And again, if you have any questions, just let us know.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
You too.
Bye.
Bye. Move a few things around here. Okay. Now, what do we have? Let's do minutes next before I forget. Except now I've got to find them.
I did not know there was an aquifer on that property.
Ah, it touches up, up at the upper end.
Yeah.
And it was, it's difficult to see on the small version of that groundwater map. When, when you enlarge it, you can begin to see the shaded area up there. Yeah, it is.
And if I remember correctly, with alteration of terrain, because the amount of impact, they might have to have a stormwater management plan.
Right, right.
That's part of the alteration of terrain.
Yeah.
And I'm curious about drainage off their access road.
Yeah.
That will all come into that whole, that will all have to be included in all the plans. Yes. It will be a very detailed.
Yes, it will.
Very detailed project and, and set of plans. Okay, let's do the minutes. From August 26th. I know.
I didn't find any corrections. I'll make the motion to accept the, the meeting minutes of Wednesday, August 26th, 2020, as presented.
Okay. And I need a second.
Second.
Roll call vote. Kathleen?
I.
Paula?
I.
And Martine, I, so approved. Okay. In the, you all now have a, an updated draft of what we've been working on for the commercial earth excavation regulations. And I think we all need to read through it a few more times.
Yes.
To catch if there's any inconsistencies.
Dense document.
Now, I did ask, I sent an email to Susan Slack at Lakes Region Planning Commission, who is the planner there. And I sent her several questions, knowing that this is, this draft document is going to be a complex thing to go through. So I asked her a few questions. I did ask her if, as we are drafting our new regulation, if she would be willing to review it. And she said, yes, she would be willing to do that. So when we're a little bit closer to being comfortable with what we have here, I will send it to Susan and ask her for any input to see whether there are any inconsistencies, things we've left out, things we need to reword. So we'll get her input. And I do also think it will have to go to legal, to the town attorney. I, I would prefer to send it, I think, to Susan Slack at LRPC first for her input. There are, what is, from the last draft that I handed out, key sections that have changed. Roman numeral 13, application submission items. There is the detailed list of first what has to be on the excavation plan. And then the next section, what has to be on the reclamation plan. So it does get very detailed, I think more detailed than our old document is, has. So I'm also thinking with the questions, some, a few of the questions that Dan just asked us, for instance, about reclaim, reclamation of a steep slope, how that's handled. That may give us a little food for thought as we go through this draft again.
Yes.
Something, something to consider. Probably if we kind of all read through it and digest it between now and the next meeting. And then we can really talk about it. There are some, some little things that I'm not sure about in here. For instance, scale of plans. We've got to cross check with some of our other application forms. I just want to make sure things are as consistent between this and other ordinances that we have also. So any general questions right off the top of your head, our heads right now?
Once we have settled on our final document, any prior, it's still existing applications, that's not the word.
Existing excavation.
Excavations, yes. Would be grandfathered, correct?
We'll have to, we'll have to talk about that. That may be a question that we approached Susan Slack about.
Okay.
How to deal with that. I think we will need to review, review the status of that other excavation operation and what documentation we have on file at the office to see how it either lines up or conflicts with what we are looking at for new regulation. I think we need to be aware of that.
Yes, I, I agree.
Yeah.
It's been an ongoing concern and I don't remember any paperwork when the operator came for renewal. I, I believe when this question says nothing's changed.
Yeah, but there, there were some things in the property file that we'll pull again and review. So we'll see what's in there. Couple other questions that I had asked Susan Slack. I did ask, not only did I ask if she would be able, willing to review our proposed regulation, I also asked if we do get this potential formal application that was discussed tonight. If we do get that, whether she would be willing to assist us with any appropriate parts of the process. And she did say yes. She also reminded us that we do have, she reminded us about the Regional Planning Commission. And the regional impact also reminded us that we do have the authority within the RSA to hire, as we do with any of our other site plans, we do have the authority to hire other outside experts that we feel are needed and that would be at the applicant's expense. She reminded us of that. The other thing that I asked, and this, this, this is one I've kind of wrestled with. If, and this is the question I asked her. If a formal application is received before our new regulation is approved, would it be advisable to evaluate the application according to the RSA rather than our 1981 regulation? In other words, which one do we go by? This was her response. This is an interesting question and you may want to run this by your town council. RSA 155E was first enacted in 1979. So if your 1981 regulations were adopted under that authority of the RSA, then they are probably still valid even if they aren't the best. But 155E has been amended several times since 1981. And our old town regulations may not have kept pace within the statutory changes. So parts of them might be invalid. So it's hard to know without comparing, she said, the 1981 regulations with the current version of RSA 155E. So it, we'll have to play this by ear. We may get to the point where we may have to put the two 1981 side by side with 155E and go line by line or, or requirement by requirement and compare them. Depending on when, if and when this possible application comes in. And it is, approval of the excavation regulations is an approval process by the planning board following a hearing, a public hearing process. It does not.
That was good information.
Yes. It is not, it does not have to go on a warrant article. So it would just follow standard prescribed hearing process to adopt it. Okay, so that was, that, we'll have more questions for her, I'm sure, at some point.
Could, could anybody answer what would happen when Latulip's permit expires? Would he come in under the new regulations?
Yeah, I would think.
Or be grandfathered?
I believe he, I, that's, my first thought was, yes.
No, he wouldn't.
But I'm not, yeah. That may be a decision, whether we make that decision as part of our new regulations or whether.
Yes, yeah, that's what we do. This supersede all other, what's the word, not documents, regulations. A new document will basically null the 1981 and everyone would have to fall under, there, there's a way, there's verbiage for stating that. That everybody would have to follow the new updated regulation. And they'd have to meet the regulations of this state statute too.
That definite, but that definitely is a question that we will have to address. And I, and to make sure that we address it properly, we probably will review that with legal counsel just to make sure that we don't make any mistakes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe, I believe his permit, was that two years ago?
I will have to look at it. It seems like two or three years ago, maybe. Yeah.
That would, that would be my guess. Are there any electrical lines, telephone lines, underground lines associated with this proposed excavation?
No, the Eversource easement is further north. And then across the highway.
They will need to, obviously, they will need to pull power in for their operation. That will be their responsibility.
Oh, you know, and that will be quite pricey. Quite pricey.
Yeah. But I, but yes, the, the major power lines are further north, I believe.
What about, what about the power lines for the residents?
Are they underground?
That's what I don't know.
I don't know.
That's what I'm asking.
I doubt if they're underground. I don't know that we have any underground power lines in town.
Yeah, Blue Sky Drive.
Oh, okay, just that one. That's, yeah. That I don't. That I don't know, Paula.
That's fine, that's fine. I'm just throwing it out as a.
Yeah. That'll be, that'll, yeah, how they, how they tie in with electrical will be their, part of their, their whole design plan.
The other thing, and of course, this isn't under the planning board purview, but I was thinking there is a trail. People, people access, I think it from the, between the Gooden property and Witten Woods. Snowmobilers use it to get down to West Street. And this area once developed could become quite the attractive nuisance to road seekers who want to, you know, snowmobile around the mounds and climb over them, ATB'ers out there.
So are there, are there some recognized official snowmobile trails through there?
No, but that was the issue that's, they were, they were using it to get to the trail system, which is across the highway. There, you know, by the liquor store, and they could get to gas and Burger King. So they were coming, they were, it's somewhere, it's at the crest there. I don't know if it's, it must be Gooden property. Because some of the trail, people were accessing Witten Woods from the Gooden property because historically that's what people did. And there had to be a few, more than, at least a couple of vehicles that had to be winched out of the area.
Oh, okay.
And Chief P told me a few weeks back, a hiker lost their bearings up at Witten Woods and he talked it down, and where did she come out behind? Quite far down, almost the West Street.
Okay, oh.
So she was able to find, she didn't have the bushwhack. So she might have found this rough trail that, that people have been using it.
Okay.
But that would be, you know, that would be a safety issue.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Okay, so read through the draft between now and our next meeting.
Okay.
And I'll go back through it again. We'll all kind of look for, now we can begin to nitpick on some of these things and, and really fine tune it if we need to.
Have to work on, you know, like the fees for bonds?
Yes, yes. Things like that.
Yeah.
And then I didn't do anything with the sample application form that was attached to that first draft. We need to get the regulations in place, fine tune first before we look at the application. So we'll do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, the other thing, I sent this afternoon another email out. Just lost, oh, there's, lost my mouse. Okay. I sent another email out this afternoon relative to budget. And I don't know whether people have had a chance to look at that.
I have no clue.
I have it up in front of me.
Okay.
And I've looked at it, I've looked at it briefly.
Okay, and Kathleen and Susan, I have it on the screen right now.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, did I hit, wait a minute, I need to hit share again. There we go. Now I've got it on the screen. Okay.
Can you, can you explain why the recommended budget is, the totals in that column are so much less than the, than the 2020?
Okay, let me explain. Let me go, let me go one column at a time.
That's fine.
Obviously, our, I didn't put the account numbers down, these are the titles of the accounts. The first three deal with the land use assistant, salary, FICA, and Medicare. Legal is what we would, if we needed to hire some extra legal help for any application or process. Training and work, training and workshops, I think, is fairly self-explanatory. Advertising is what would be needed, not for advertising of applications that we get, because those are covered by application fees. Advertising here would be the extra advertising we did, for instance, last year for the warrant article process. That, that's what that would be. Printing, we've never really done much with that. General expenses covers the secretary pay and any other general uses. It also covers the law books that we get, some other things of that type. Postage is self-explanatory, and that fee placeholder, right now, don't even worry about that. Doesn't.
No, no.
It doesn't have any, doesn't have any effect on it. Okay, now, looking at the 2020 requested column. Now we're going to look at the numbers. The first column of numbers, 2020 requested, is what our original request was last year for the, for the, for the current year that we're working under. Then the second column, 2020 received default, remember, the budget was approved at a default level.
That's right.
Okay.
Get what was.
Now, you're going to ask, now, you're going to ask, why is the default higher than the requested, the original requested? Because when they do the default, they look at, they, in a simple term, they look at what was approved the year before. That's why.
I see, yeah.
Was that what was requested in 2019?
19, yes, yes. So that's why, yes. Now, we have not submitted a budget yet. That's why 2021 land use request column is empty. The last column, 2021 town manager recommended, Charlie has put in some, a kind of placeholder numbers that he would like to see. I know they are attempting to keep very tight control over the budget that is presented so that it, you know, probably, I would imagine he's trying to keep it at least no higher than the default. That's my guess. So he, so those numbers in the 2021 town manager recommended are what he has put down in his column. I do have a couple things we need to look at. There have been no changes with the first three, first three rows, land use assistant, FICA, and Medicare. No discussion needed, it's the same right across. That should be sufficient. The next line down, legal. We did $3,000 last year, we have not had to use any of it. He is suggesting that we just put $1 on that line.
What's the next one?
It's a gamble.
It's, it is a gamble.
Because it wasn't, we haven't used any.
Right. Now, if.
Yeah, it would be called padding the budget. Paula, if we, if we haven't spent anything and we request the same.
I get, I get, I get the idea.
You get the idea, yeah.
But, but.
Why are we asking for it if we didn't use it last year?
But it is, as Kathleen said, it is a gamble. We could turn around and all of a sudden have a case that does get challenged or where we've got to pull in, there are some times we may be able to use the town attorney. For instance, reviewing an ordinance. That, that would come out of, generally out of the town attorneys. But zoning board especially, if they, if a zoning board issue came up that involved some legal advice, zoning board generally hires their own attorney. Because especially if, if the legal issue in question were between the select board and the zoning board. The select board can disagree with a zoning board finding. So generally, generally, as the ZBA will hire their own attorney.
Okay.
This is for ZBA and planning board, this budget?
Yes, yes.
Ah, okay.
Yes, that's why it says land use at the top. This is planning board and zoning board. I should have clarified that at the beginning.
That's, that's the bit of information I, I thought was true, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that's one line we've got to look at. Training and workshops. Mr. Smith has pulled that down to 200 recommended.
Well, everything.
Obviously, obviously, this year with the pandemic, major conferences have been canceled. Probably seeing, going to see more and more webinars. Although NHMA, some of their webinars, there is a charge for.
You are correct, yeah.
They're not all free. So that, that line is a question. Advertising. This I don't, I'm not concerned about. Remember, any advertising we have to do for an application, you know, sending out, putting newspaper ads, sending out a butters notices, those are covered by the fees that the applicant pays.
Yes.
Last year, we did have a couple advertisements and, and notices go out because of what we put on our, what we put on the warrant article. We had to advertise hearings for those. So those come, would come direct out of this type of line. Okay, so, again, that's a guess. Printing, as I said, I don't know that we've, for several years, if we've used anything in printing. Whatever copies we need to make, we make at the town office on the town copier.
Right.
So I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not uncomfortable with that. General expenses, I am uncomfortable with that, much of a drop. Just looking at what we pay for secretary and purchasing the RSA books, that I'm a little concerned about. Postage, $1. I don't know. Again. Yeah, I can't quite hear Susan.
She said that means we can't mail more than probably two letters.
But I've, I don't, I've mailed things out right from the town office that were not butters notices and.
They went to the postage meter?
Went right over to the postage meter, postage on, gone out. So.
Our communication is done via email. Governmental email.
Right.
And that's basically taking the place of having to send somebody a, you know, snail mail.
Yeah.
Sometimes we need to do both.
Follow up on home occupation.
Did you hear what she said?
No, no, can't quite, I can almost hear her, but not quite.
Yeah, we're going to sit together.
Okay.
Well, I, I know we were doing that draft with the home occupation letters too. Wanted totally to take care of them. Because, again, before this meeting, Kathleen and I were discussing the jam girl who has a walk-in trade with signs and open flag and whatever else.
Right, right.
That needs to be, that, among other things, should be followed up. So where, who takes care of the postage for those types of things?
Yeah. So I, I don't know, I've never been questioned about postage, so I don't, I don't know. But the, the one that I have a concern about is the general expense line.
Yeah.
I would like to see that pulled up. I did some figuring, and I think we can handle it at about 1,500.
Okay. All right.
Susan, what concerns do you have on budget?
Well, no, I guess he, I mean, he's trying to track what we've actually spent, which makes sense. The, yeah, the fee placeholder thing drives me crazy because he says we need a placeholder, but that's supposed to indicate that we have an income.
Right, right.
So it doesn't make sense to have it even as a dollar that it goes out.
Yeah. So that's, that's a discussion with maybe finance.
After it might finally straighten it out.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. So I would.
Yeah, so other than, legal, legal is a problem. Especially if, yes, the ZBA only has to get in hot water once or need some guidance because they're all relatively new members. And if this excavation comes before them, they, they might need to have some assistance.
Yes. And where does the money, where would the money come from?
Yeah. Somewhere in the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would.
I, I would say just we do, just reduce it by 500.
Well, I was also on the advertising line. I would say we could go down to 200 on the advertising line and still probably cover anything that we would need. I don't know, what do you think?
One or two for, yeah, the zoning ordinance hearings or whatever else.
Right.
And again, if we're going to, if we're going to do the excavation sometime, that would need a repub, a public hearing notification.
Yeah. And that will, hopefully, that will likely come in this year. The excavation regulations.
Cover around what, $54 to $60?
Fifty, fifty, 55 to 65, something like that, yeah, yeah. For one ad, depending how big it is, yeah. So I would, I would be comfortable pulling the advertising down to 200. I would like to see the general expenses go up to 1,500. The legal, I don't know what we want to do with that.
It would be nice to hear again, at least the chairman of the ZBA have
Yes.
a discussion regarding that too.
Yes, we have to have, yes, yes. So this is just, just for, for right now, it's just our opinion. And then I'll talk with Dave Toth, the chair of the ZBA, and we'll hash it.
Challenge, we can't use, we shouldn't use the town legal because it will cost anyways. And we'd be on their monthly, the spore from business they do for us on our monthly retainer. They would probably just turn around and say, you need to talk to Mr. Parker.
Yeah, so I don't know, now, last year, we had our home occupation and ADU language reviewed by legal. I don't know whether we ever got charged for that or not, or whether that, whether they did that under the standard retainer.
Charlie, Charlie, my understanding is he usually asks for, so he doesn't get a nasty surprise.
Well, you, yeah, usually, in the past, I, I think I would actually send it to the town administrator or now the town manager to say, this is what we need to have legal embedded for a warrant article.
Right, yes, yes.
It's a conduit that he is sending it, not us directly.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yes, absolutely goes through the town manager, yes, yeah. So what would you all recommend put on the legal line? I don't like seeing $1 there.
No. 1,500?
1,000 or 1,500?
Yeah.
I'd go for, I'd go for 1,500.
It's not even 10 hours worth of time.
And that's the whole thing.
I know, it's still.
Like what, 200 some dollars an hour, you know?
Yeah.
And it might be not us, the planning board, but
Right.
one challenge to the ZBA.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly, it's more, it's more to cover and make sure that we cover any ZBA
Absolutely, yeah.
expenses.
Yeah.
Because there could be, there could be some, some really complex applications coming their way.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know what, I don't know what happened with the Kenny property. He was going to put a shed and he needed to go to ZBA about the setbacks. He wanted to put the shed and the setbacks.
Haven't heard anything yet.
No.
No.
But I mean, something like that might be in the pipeline and the hides. and the hides might need to go to the ZBA for what they're suggesting they want to do. I'm just saying there, there might be other applications that might pop up other than our present one with, with the excavation.
Yeah.
On West Street.
Yeah, because just from previous experience, just if the ZBA and/or the planning board is going to be taken to court, the creation of the certified record alone will cost legal before they even step into court.
Yes, that's, that's putting all the referenced, all the relevant documents together.
Correct.
The package, yeah.
Yes.
For one of our cases, that stack was about 4 inches high.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if we did, if we, if we suggested, if we recommended 1,500 for legal, 200, changing advertising to 200, changing general expenses to 1,500, that total comes to 9216. So.
And since we are statutorily bound to have a planning board, in my view, that budget is small compared to some of the departmental budgets that are, what's the word I'm looking for? They are not bound by statute or by town vote to provide. You know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying, yes, yes.
We, we have to, we have to exist and we have to have a budget to sustain the duties we have to provide.
Okay, so I'll talk to Dave Toth and we'll, we'll work out what we want to, what we want to recommend for land use to the town manager. Okay.
Okay, that wasn't too hard.
No, no.
My feet wet since this will be coming up very shortly. And yes, I'll probably be asked to justify it.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, yes, why, why is the default for the general expenses higher than the year before?
Because that's what it was the year, that's what it was in 2019.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
See, I'm even in the wrong year.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's one of those interesting twists with default budgets, yeah.
That they kept insisting on it being based on our case load.
Yeah.
We can't, because we draw off the case load.
Well, they pay for it too. So I don't have to go up and down on the same cases we have, correct?
Okay, yeah. Okay, anything else?
Other than, I was gonna bring up about the, what appears to be an active home occupation on River Street, especially when I saw a open sign that wasn't just a weekend stop by and make a few purchases. It appears to be business.
Yeah, anything like that, send it, just send a quick note to planning board email.
Oh, you want me to officially do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, yeah, just a, just a quick reminder. And then, because we've got a list of, I think we've got some other things we need to look at too.
And before, it was, it was in the newspaper, I've had a few. Although residents comment on it and.
Yes.
And, you know, I, I've seen it myself, so just, just back and forth.
Yeah.
I guess in our correspondence, that Carr Avenue property came up. So remember, he, he had emailed quite a while back about somebody putting up a garage. It seems the garage is actually.
Yes.
And now there's a fence going in, so here we are with a fence.
Fence issue again.
Yeah.
So with the fence. With the fence, with the fence issue, if it's under six feet, it's not considered a structure.
There's no setbacks involved because it's not a structure, correct?
So under, let's, those are two different things, let's take it one step at a time. So under six feet, it is not a structure. Over six feet, it is a structure.
And, and you must have a building permit.
Yeah, so if it's over six feet, it is a structure. And needs a building permit, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then setbacks.
Don't let me, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, please. We all need to agree.
Certainly, certainly, buddy.
Now, if it is.
Over six feet.
Over six feet, it becomes a structure according to.
It's defined as a structure.
According to the definitions in the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
And.
And it must need setbacks.
Okay, that's where we get a little tricky because how do we, what language do we have to prove that?
Because it's a structure.
It's defined as a structure. And then our.
So a structure needs a building permit, a structure cannot be in the setback, correct?
Yeah, because I guess we went round about this before, but people who are just putting up storage sheds, which might actually cost less than a big ass fence, has gone to the ZBA to get a variance to be able to put it in a setback area.
Yes, we have done.
It might even be more movable than a fence.
That's right, but we have, we have made sheds within the setback go for, go to the ZBA.
Variance, yeah.
Correct.
Yes, for variance, yeah. Okay, so over six feet is a structure, it needs a building permit, and it cannot be in the setback without, without a variance. Right?
Correct.
Okay, if it's under, if it's under six feet, it's not a structure.
It's not needed building permit.
Don't need a building permit, can it be within the setback?
Yeah, I think technically, I mean, it gets, it's hard to tell because the RSA's don't give you much guidance either. Because they talk about mutual boundary fences where a butters agreed that the fence can be right on the property line.
And, and establish a property line.
And they don't rock wall.
Right, and they establish that they both are who's gonna take care of it and the whole.
There's some kind of structure to an agreement with the fence.
But that, but that reads
But again.
As a different situation than what we're dealing with here.
Right, so if he even just sets back a foot from his property line and it's under six feet, it's technically in his property and he's not encroaching on.
That's the word, encroachment.
It's not an encro.
So under six feet is not a structure. Don't need building permit? Okay. It can be within the setback. Although we would strongly recommend that it not be on the boundary line. That's, that's.
They put little ashtrays, please talk to your neighbor.
Yeah, because, I mean, again, this is where if somebody who says they're doing it on the boundary or not on the boundary, needs to have a survey to prove where the boundary actually is.
Yes.
And most people won't want to go to the expense of having a survey if they don't have obvious markers to follow.
Yeah. Now, with the email in question, the picture, it was very hard to tell height of.
Yeah, the one, I mean.
I just went by the woman standing next to the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there was only one picture that showed something reasonable as to what was going on.
And then it was vegetation.
I was gonna print it out, but it was, it was nine pages and it started to break funny and we hadn't seen vegetation pictures, no help at all.
No, I didn't understand that.
I've got to resize, yeah, the pictures need to be resized, yeah. Okay.
If on the property line, it's not encroaching.
Say that again, Kathleen?
If you put it on the property line, you're not encroaching on your butter. Unless it's two inches over. Yeah.
But with, but with putting a fence on a boundary line of a, of a property, do anything if, if the property were sold, the butters property were sold, or he wanted to subdivide it, would there be any questions since the fence is right there on the boundary line?
It could cause issues.
Signifying a boundary line.
But then it could become under dispute who owns the fence. So if somebody sold the property, somebody might take the opportunity to take it down again. No, they didn't put it up.
Yeah, if that fence is right on the boundary line, somebody's gonna argue, well, who owns it? Yeah.
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 Who fixes it, yeah, yeah.
And how does, and how does that affect the sale of, the future sale of my property?
Well, it might not, just not the sale, it could be an ongoing Hatfield McCoy type situation.
Ongoing dispute, yes, yeah. Okay, so planning board will respond to that.
We can tactfully say tomorrow.
Yes, yes, and I think if we, I think let's put together a brief memo explaining this so that we can pull it up anytime we need it.
Yeah. It's come up often enough.
It has, my gosh, yes.
Yes, it has.
Number three.
Yeah, yeah. That brings to mind, Kathleen or Susan, do you know anything about, is there a way that we can get a list of what building permits have been issued?
I, I, we were discussing this at dinnertime.
Or at least, at least from now going forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Because I've asked who's keeping track of it and Charlie said, I think it's being taken care of, but I have yet to see documentation and I don't know whether it's the assessor or what happened to them, but all the file cabinets do not contain them.
Because I can, with the, the variety of questions that we've had over this last year, from putting a shed, where's the shed, where can the shed be put with or inside or outside the setback? With fence questions, I guess I am a little concerned as to how these situations are followed through on. Do they, if they decide to put the shed within setback, have they, or if, if they decide not to put it within the setback, even to build a shed on the property, did they get a building permit? I'm concerned just about follow through.
Exactly, because, because we can't police, we're not supposed to police.
No.
And we always get those concerned citizens that ask, did so-and-so get a building permit? Are they allowed to do that? Like the email that was received today.
Yeah. It would just, it would just help put some of these questions to rest if we had on a periodic basis, get a list of permits that were issued.
I had a question posed to me, it was on Lake property, and I said, yes, by the way, that dwelt, those, that building did get a dredge and fill permit. They had quite a lengthy permit. They did go through the process and DES did grant them multiple permits to do it. Yes, it's an increase of impervious surface, but it said they did go through the permitting process and did receive all their permits. You know, because it, we, certain people don't like how it looked or feel that they might have violated something. I did say, I, I did see the, the whole permit package and they did receive permission.
Yeah. And that's another thing that, that's another little concern I have. I think most of those DES permits, planning board is supposed to get a copy of them.
Well, they're all supposed to come to the town clerk.
Yes, but I.
Whether we're notified, and that's why I referred to the one stop because that was the way the conservation commission had any idea of what some of the activity that was going on because we never received the, the information.
Yeah, that recent permit that was granted, and it was a, it was multiple pages on heavy stock that was on the select board table for a while. That, when you look down at the very end, when you read the fine print, the planning board is supposed to get a copy of that.
And so is the select board.
Yes.
Put on the deck.
Yes.
But I, I'm probably one of the few people that actually picked it up and read it.
Yeah.
Because I, I, yeah, it's.
Yeah, but if we're supposed to get a physical copy of it.
Yes, you are.
Then we need to get, we need to have that.
Because right now, without a conservation commission, the select board can make recommendations.
Yes, yes.
And.
But, and I, I think that, that copy then should go in the land use file. The land use copy, the planning board copy.
I agree with you.
The planning board copy, yeah.
The more people, the more people who are in the roof and get the information that's needed is, is a good thing.
Yes. So those are my two little pet peeves right now.
No, no, they're, they're justified because.
Building permits and DES permits.
Though I told Susan, I did speak to you about my deal with the new setup they have. Before, you never saw what the original request by the applicant was. You just saw that whether it was approved or not, or if they needed more information. Now you have that little area and it wasn't until I inadvertently touched it with the, the mouse. I went, oh, gosh, it opened up and flowed down, you could actually see what, what the, the applicant was requesting. And in the latest one, you could see what they were requesting. DES said, we need more information. And that, like, like planning board, the clock begins to tick. You have 30 days to respond with the information that's, that is missing.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
Me too.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, the meeting is adjourned.